All right, we will go ahead and conclude or continue with open session. First up is approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is public comment. Do we have any public comments? No. Okay, great. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Retiree.
Retiree recognition. Recognition. Oh my gosh, I can't believe I almost forgot that. I'm sorry.
It's a big moment.
Kind of a big thing.
But every year, we recognize our retirees from the district. And this year, we're recognizing Kim Danielski, Kim Anderson, Linda Cloudwitter, Julie Radonovovich, Dan Shields, Joanna Slot, and Pat Stopcheck. I'll talk about Kim last, but Kim Danielski is retiring from special education from Westmont High School, and she was a employee of our district for twenty-three years. Seventeen-year employee who is retiring is Linda Cloudwitter, who is our Director of Special Education for two oh one. Julie Radonovovich is our night custodian at Manning, and she is retiring with fifteen years of service. Dan Shields is retiring as a teaching assistant at Westmont Junior High. After seven years of service, Joanna Slot is a math intervention at Manning Elementary School. She also served the district as a specialized teacher and also a classroom teacher at the elementary level, and she has worked for the district for nineteen years. And Pat Stopcheck is retiring from our food service department after twenty-nine years of service. And the person sitting to my right, Kim Anderson, is our chief school business official. And Kim and I actually started in the district the same year, July of two thousand and ten. And I think Kim will remember this story, but we were working late, probably getting ready for a board meeting, and we were just packing up, getting ready to go, and all of a sudden, all you could hear were all kinds of sirens in Westmont. And we're both trying to figure out what's going on. Kim called her husband Greg to find out if there's anything on the news. And so we realized that there were several squad cars going down Cass Avenue with their sirens on. And later on, we found out that is the Westmont Cruise Night Squad Car Night. So there was no huge crime spree in Westmont. But that was, that was our early introduction to cruise nights. And our, at that time, our office was at Manning. But, you know, Kim, you know, people will see her at board meetings doing the financial reports, but people really don't see the behind the scenes, everything that Kim does for our district. And the job that Kim had in two thousand and ten is so much different today. You know, all the grant reports have changed. You know, the, she, right now, she kind of oversees our recall list, and all that has changed. Every time there's new legislation, it seems like things change. And then you layer on COVID nineteen, and then the ester funds and everything that's involved in that. So definitely where what Kim was doing when she started with the district, what she's doing today is night and day. She is a dedicated employee, puts in incredible hours. Anything that our district does always comes down to financing. You know, we could have the best ideas, the best intentions, but if we can't fund those ideas, we can't fund those programs. It doesn't matter how good those ideas are. And so, so often, you know, the admin team or, you know, our staff will come up with these great ideas, and then we kind of turn to Kim and say, hey, how are you going to stretch this dollar a little more so that we can do this for our kids? And Kim sharpens her pencil, and she, you know, it's amazing what she's been able to do with our budget in order to support so many things that happen in our district. During Kim's tenure, we've added an all-day kindergarten program, a dual-language program. She oversaw the high school renovation, which was built in the seventies, is an open campus classroom concept. And all those classrooms are enclosed now. There were no windows. There are windows, updated technology, updated commons area, office space. So really, it was amazing, amazing transition of our high school. She oversaw the secure entrances at South Manning Miller and the Junior High, which in light of most recent events, we realize how important those entrances are to our safety and security, in addition to new educational spaces at Manning Miller and the Junior High. She oversaw the renovation of our South Elementary School, which is now our early childhood center and district office. So many different curriculum improvements and updates, you know, that we have done. And we've added staff, we've added instructional coaches, we've added administrative positions. And every time, our budget wasn't expanding at the same rate, but Kim was able to somehow make it all work for us. And then, of course, the numerous bargaining agreements that Kim has been involved in, and we've never had a strike or labor stoppage during that tenure. So, you know, there's so many improvements and initiatives that Kim has been working behind the scenes for our district. Even tonight, Kim's last board meeting, she's working on a bond issue so that we can finally take care of the HVAC issues at our junior high, which, you know, the history there, it seems like the day that building was opened in the seventies, it had issues with this HVAC system, and Kim's been working on that. She has worked tireless hours. I know she's sacrificed time with her family as a result of that. But on behalf of the two oh one school community, the Board of Education, myself, thank you, Kim, for your years of service and dedication to two oh one. I know you're going to enjoy your retirement and your grandchildren, and couldn't be happier for you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I would just add on behalf of the board to thanking all of the retirees. I feel like hearing how long some of the people have been so committed to CUSD two oh one, to education and school finance, Kim, thank you. And, you know, we're, there's some relatively new board, but Kim has always been really willing to answer questions about finances, which is certainly not my area of expertise in education, so thank you. You will be very missed. All right, we'll go ahead and move on now to the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations. Jamie Max, Director of Human Resources and Public Relations. Elizabeth Smith, Manning, fifth-grade dual-language teacher. Cheryl Brower, Accounts Payable. Amanda Sorels, Accounting Coordinator. Gerald Vasek, Summer Custodial Help. Cyrus Martin, Westmont High School Froshsoft Cross Country Coach. Laura Pergandy, Westmont High School Girls' Varsity Soccer Coach. Tyler Pierce, Boys Basketball Summer Camp. Celestia Coney, Westmont High School Volleyball Summer Camp. And I don't see any resignations on here. Are there any? Don't, no resignations. Got it. Okay. Number two, approval of board travel expenses. Number three, approval of additional May two thousand and twenty-two expenditure report. Number four, approval of June two thousand and twenty-two expenditure report. Number five, ratification of May two thousand and twenty-two regular payroll. Number six, appointment of school treasurer. Number seven, resolution to abate working cash funds. Number eight, approval of additional SACID classroom lease, Westmont High School space. Number nine, approval of donation from Girl Scout Troop five seven eight one. Number ten, approval of donation from the presentation group of Westmont. Number eleven, disposal of equipment. And number twelve, approval of IHSA membership.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Mr. Abia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Stecky?
Yes.
And before we move on, I just want to say welcome to everybody and our new hires, most especially Jamie. We're super excited to have some HR and some PR support in the district. We've been working on it for a long time, so we're really excited to have you and everybody on here. Yes. And a big thank you to the Girl Scouts. Yeah, awesome. Thank you for that water filling station. Really cool.
That's great. So next up on our agenda is information and discussion. We have, we're going to start with a couple of presentations related to our superintendent's search. The first one from BWP.
And as, as the gentlemen are getting ready, I also want to thank, welcome Jamie Max, who is our new HR PR Director, who's here with us this afternoon. And then I keep getting asked this question, and so just for clarification for our school community, my retirement is June of two thousand and twenty-three. This evening, this evening, we have two search firms who are going to present to the board their process for selecting a superintendent.
Thanks, Kevin. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. We know we have about ten minutes to talk, so we're going to talk fast and assume that the materials we've given you before and tonight will be helpful to support your understanding of not only the work we've done, but the, but the, but where we've worked and how we do it and how we've worked with all of you. My name is Steve Greasbach. I am a retired superintendent from Gower School District sixty-two, just up the road, and very familiar with Westmont, though not as familiar as Allen, who, he never talked to you before. And I, you know, I remember that because I remember meeting his wife when I stole one of your principals from Manning coming from work for us, Tom Carey, about twenty, oh gosh, a while ago. But it was, it was a good steal. It was a great principal. He had great, great things to say about the district here. I've been working with BWP now since I retired in two thousand and thirteen, so I've done about thirty searches, not only here in Illinois, but also in Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Indiana. But I really do most of my work here in Illinois and really like that. I've also dabbled in some superintendencies, and occasionally they have interim positions. Most recently, I decided that COVID was really boring, sit at home and doing nothing, and I cited, I'd say, well, they need me somewhere. Okay, so I went to La Grange Highlands in two thousand and twenty-two, actually started three days before two thousand and twenty-two, so I got a little twenty-one in there, and went through there till they were able to hire a real superintendent. So it's great to be here, and congratulations, Kevin, thirteen years. When you finish, the kindergarteners that came in with you will be high school seniors. That's amazing. I'm here with some great colleagues of mine. Joe Porto is, and Omar. Omar, you can introduce yourself. And I know you guys are broadcasting, so it's helpful if we stay here at the podium.
Yes, yes.
Omar Castillo, I am superintendent of Kinneyville School District here in DuPage County, so I'm happy to be working with BWP on possibly the search.
And I'm Joe Porto. I'm also a retired superintendent. I was a superintendent for sixteen years. Part of that time was in Burr Ridge, and the other part of the time was in Willmett. And I've been working with BWP for the last twelve years, and between Steve and I and Omar, we've done about fifty superintendent searches. So we're an experienced team. Our presentation sometimes is about twenty minutes or so, but we want to be very respectful of the time limit that you put on us. So rather than do a formal PowerPoint, we did just a handout for you. And I'm going to just pick a couple of things to highlight from each page so you get a feel for our process, but the, we won't have a chance to go through all of it, so use it as a resource afterwards when you have your discussions. Okay? So again, we're a national search firm. We've been around a long time, and we have some real experience here on this particular team. The most important factors on this first page, if you're following along, is that we have a remarkable history of success. We're extremely proud. One of our areas of expertise is personally networking and recruiting candidates. We like to say that we don't follow the Field of Dreams movie mantra, if you build it, they will come. We don't just put up an advertisement and cross our fingers and hope the right people will apply. We have a very intense network, and once we have an idea of what you're looking for, we have, we put all of our associates and partners to work on it, and that's what we do best. And that's led to some of the statistics below. Ninety-nine percent of our placements have finished their first contracts, and we're very proud of that. Ninety-five percent have gone on to subsequent contracts. And one of those is from somebody whose spouse got transferred to another state, and she didn't leave because she had to. But we are honest, and we have to report that.
Yep. The only thing you should know is that typically in any search that we do, about half the candidates that apply are people we've tapped on the shoulder and recruited. That's, that's how significant that recruiting effort is.
In a recent search that, that I did, I was very kind of proud of the six candidates that we brought to the board. Five of those six candidates were people that we personally recruited, that probably wouldn't even have applied if we hadn't tried to match them up. But that's what we're all about, matching up the right candidates with the needs of the district. So the next pages of the PowerPoint are the five phases of our process. The first phase is customizing and organizing. If we were to be fortunate enough to get this search, the first thing we'd do is set up a meeting with all of you, and we would plan all the intricacies of the search. And the word I want you to remember from this page is flexible. We have a process, but we're also very, very open to board customization. How do we do that? Some boards want a more condensed timeframe rather than the amount of time we normally do. Some boards want more community involvement, some boards want less community involvement. So we sit at a meeting and we listen to you, we have a checklist of decisions that we make together, and we mobilize, and we get organized. Excuse me. Phase two, in my opinion, is probably the most important phase of all. You could also write the word "community engagement" on this page. This is the phase of the search where we'll come into your district, and we'll try to gather input on three questions. What are the strengths of Westmont that you want to see continue and nurture and grow? What are some issues and maybe concerns that the new superintendent is going to have to deal with when he or she comes in? And then the big one, what characteristics do you think the new superintendent needs to have? And we get that information several ways. We'll interview each board member privately, a one-to-one interview, and we'll ask you those questions. We will come into the district on a day, and hopefully Kevin could help us, you know, set that up and Shannon, and we'll meet with focus groups, groups of teachers, groups of administrators, maybe your PTA leadership, community leaders, community officials. And we'll meet and talk face-to-face and ask those same three questions. And then, so that nobody feels that they weren't involved or couldn't supply input, we add to that a survey that we'll help you put on your website, and anyone in the community, we love when the high school students respond as well. We put all of that information together, and we create what we call the leadership profile, and it will be very distinct for District two oh one. We really listen, and it'll be the final report. We'll summarize the strengths, summarize the concerns, and then be maybe eight to ten bullet point profile of what the new leadership should look like. And then that's when, as Steve mentioned, we go to work trying to match up the right people. Guys, jump in if I'm missing anything. Phase, oh, speed up. All right, phase three. Yeah, okay.
I'm the timekeeper.
That's good. Next, we do recruitment. We advertise. It'll probably be more of a local search than a national search, but we have those abilities available. We start researching, researching applications, reviewing them. We'll pick twelve people or so, ten to twelve people, we'll bring and we'll do personal interviews with. And those interviews are structured around the leadership profile. So we develop the questions, and we assess the candidates based on the unique needs of District two oh one. Phase four, when we've done our job right, we usually have four to six candidates to bring to your attention. We'll have a meeting that will combine sharing with you who those candidates are and some background information, and then we'll use that to prepare you and train you for interviewing because some people may have not ever been involved in that before. Then the process shifts more towards all of you. There's two rounds of interviews that a board does. The first one is with those four to six candidates. Hopefully, you'll then narrow that down to have a couple of finalists, and you'll have a second round of interviews. Sometimes boards like to make the second round interviews a little less formal, and maybe they'll do a dinner with each of the two finalists. Then hopefully, you'll have a consensus, and you'll choose your superintendent. We will help you in any of the contract issues that might come up and transition issues to make sure that everything goes well. And then real, we don't have time for me to go over the next page, but you should take a look at it. The next page, we mapped out a timeframe for all of you. You could see that we would start in earnest in August, and you would have your new superintendent early in December. Again, this could be customized. We've given you our fee and our best estimate of any expenses, which should be minimal on a local search. And then I'll wrap things up with, again, a couple of things that make us unique. We give you a two-year guarantee, even though we have never had to use it, but if something happened and your choice didn't make it through those first two years, we'd come back and do the search at no, no charge, except for expenses. We also have a one-year of mentoring, where the new superintendent will be mentored by our, all three of us, and that goes through the entire year. And some superintendents take really good advantage of that, and others, we, we don't let them forget about us, and we'll call them up and say, hey, let's meet, see how things are going in Westmont. So if I went over, I apologize. For me, that was lightning speed.
They saw that he was once a college professor. You know those guys. One of the things I just want to conclude with is thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. We know your time is valuable, and we appreciate your service, and especially in these difficult times we've had over the last couple of years with school boards and communities. It's some, too, too often, it seems like a thankless job, but it's so important work you're doing. The second thing is that Joe talked a little bit about our process. We'll always argue, and not argue, but we'll probably try to encourage you to make this as transparent to your community as possible so they know what's going on. And then the other thing is we, we always look for stability. When you have someone in a district a long period of time, thirteen years, and it's the right person, good things get done for kids and everyone else. And then good things get done with kids because everyone knows how the game is going to be played. It doesn't change. There's some stability there, and I want, we'd like to help you build that with the next person that follows Kevin. So thanks for the conversation tonight.
And did you have questions that we could answer for you while we're here?
I had one question. You guys mentioned ninety-nine percent completing their first contracts, and then the two-year guarantee. So is the first contract typically a one-year or a two-year contract with you guys?
Well, in.
Does it depend on the district?
We often suggest it's usually a three-year contract.
Okay.
In Illinois, you are restricted to a three-year contract for a person becoming a superintendent for the first time. People who've already served as superintendent can sign up to a five-year contract.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Three years, though, it's probably the most current and frequent that we see.
Cool, thank you.
I have a question. In every field right now, hiring is really challenging. So can you just share your preliminary thoughts on how you'd position Westmont to people you are recruiting, how you position our district to them?
That is a good question. You know, one of the things I think that, you know, is that you're looking for what makes you unique and different and better. And one of the things I think that people look for is your unit district, and a unit district with, of small size. There aren't many places like that. And so that's very unique. A second advantage that you have is you've been well-performing, and so people like those things. They'll look at the stability of your community and of the staff and of the leadership here, and that's meant a lot. So those are all good things in your favor. You know, the proximity to Chicago and the suburban areas is very, very attractive to people to work. And I also think that, you know, I think people will go back, as I did, and look and see what's going on in your community over the last couple of years, and they'll say, I'm not going to a place where there's a, you know, that has become overly politicized and a challenging place, that you can, you can really concentrate on working with children and bringing out the best in them. So, you know, I always say, superintendent's job is to bring out, to bring out the best in principals, who then bring out the best in teachers, who bring out the best in kids. Simple formula, and, and you guys have been doing that for years. So I think those things would be important to us and to any candidate. I hear lots of people who say, I like the, the, the pre-K through twelve experience, you know, and actually, you know, you had the special line on, it could go on till twenty-five, so, twenty-two, right? So twenty-five would be, that's the next, that'd be another piece.
Yeah, thank you.
The mentoring is part of the fees that you pay?
And what, what exactly does it entail?
It entails anything and everything. I'm currently mentoring a new, I guess he's, he's in a, in a Chicago charter school, first time I've ever done that. And we literally meet once a month to talk about the board agenda, talk about issues. You know, it's a, it's a place that really needs a guiding hand. There's been a lot of inbreeding there, and it's kind of unwinding that, figure out where you, where you, where you push and where you don't is important. So we are literally meeting on a monthly basis and probably talking two times a week, two times a month is on top of that, just to kind of help things get acclimated. So that's, that's on the, the, the big side. The other side, we might meet on a monthly basis, or just a phone call, how's things going? Or we may go out and have lunch with someone at that point in time. It can be as formal as the person needs. There are some people, they've been superintendents before, they just like someone to let steam off with sometimes, and we're safe people to do that with. You don't, you don't want to always do that with your board. And so.
And we each have people that started as the official mentoring from a search, and seven years later, we're still, I'll say quote mentoring, now we're just colleagues.
I'm here, they're still mentoring me.
Yeah.
Omar and I actually did do some mentoring.
We did?
In his first superintendency.
It's a win-win for the, the new superintendent and us.
It's not, it's also from the other end, the superintendent feeling comfortable to reach out. So, you know, my comfort level with reaching out when in my first superintendacy, I knew I could count on, you know, whatever I had, twenty-four seven.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
I just have a question about community involvement. How do you guys ensure that we get proper feedback? Seems like we'll send out surveys and we don't get as much feedback as we'd like.
You know, my board, when I was superintendent at Gower once, said, how do we get more people at board meetings? And I said, make them angry. And it always works.
It does.
No, we're going to outsource our bus service. Oh, we got fifty people at a board meeting. That's a, that's a lot of people. We're going, some board member decided they thought it might be a good idea for us to go to uniforms. Not, not, you know, typically, you wanted the boys to be in, in blazers, and the girls to be in, well, that got people riled up, too. Some people liked it, some people didn't. We want to make sure it's available. One of the things you got to do that we think is a great idea with the survey is to have it coincide with an event in school. So you guys are starting at the perfect time, so you can lay it out so that it coordinates with a back-to-school night, a curriculum night, whatever you have. So you can publicize it there. People can do the survey in about five minutes. That's a great way to get people involved. The second thing that we find is that, you know, if you target groups, your PTO, your PTA, your booster groups. The second thing that we find is that, you know, if you target groups, your PTO, your PTA, your booster groups, those people get involved. And then we always try to conclude the survey after the, after we've done the focus groups. And usually the focus groups, the best way to get involvement in the focus groups is by invitation. Because people really feel as though you're, they're going to be heard. That they, and usually, you know, you don't, you know, you don't invite your buddies from next door or your friends. What you really try to do is take those leadership places. And then we always have an open forum. And those are usually, you know, anybody can show up. And we've found that actually, one of the things I've learned during COVID is that more people attend those things if you do them online than if you do them in person. It's just easier to handle. And so we've learned a lot and changed it because just the workforce has changed. And, you know, my son who used to travel four days a week now works at home. And so we've adapted it and found that actually there's some benefits to that in terms of involvement. So I can never tell you that, that you'll get, you know, if you've got 800 families here, that you'll get 800 responses. But really what you're looking for and, and at the bottom line is you're saying, everyone has an opportunity to contribute and be a part of it. And sometimes that's a, that's a mantra we say, keep saying, you were invited to contribute your thoughts. You were involved with it. Because ultimately, you're going to make a decision and it's going to make some people happy and some people unhappy. It's sort of like every decision. Probably you'll make most people happy. But everyone, you'll look at those people and say, well, you know, that didn't come up on the survey. We looked and listened to the community. And we think that engagement part is really important in your decision-making, our decision-making prior upstream from that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, thanks. Have a great evening.
You too.
Don't listen to a word. I gotta say, he can't reduce those dreams. It's one of my favorite.
All right, next we have a presentation from, you'll have to remind me your name.
Illinois Association of School Boards.
Illinois Association of School Boards, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yep. I haven't known those gentlemen for a long time. And we're always appearing at the same meetings to compete against each other. But, you know, they're very quality people as well. So it's always interesting, somewhat fun to be together in these, but then it becomes very competitive, so. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. My name is Al Mulby and I am a consultant for the Illinois Association of School Boards. And my colleague, Dr. Patricia Vineyard, she was going to be here tonight, but she had to go fill in at another district because of an illness to our other presenter who was going to be there. So she wasn't able to come. But she and I together will be working with the district on the search. Should we be your choice to do so. And so I will be doing the presentation tonight. But Dr. Vineyard and I will be working together throughout the whole, the whole process. Just a little bit about myself. I am a retired superintendent as well, which is how I know these gentlemen. I was a superintendent in suburban Cook County in Hillside Elementary School District. I was there for 15 years and I'd been a principal there before that. I was an assistant superintendent in the Mannheim School District area for 10 years. And I had been a teacher and a coach in Hillside and also in Iowa where I started my career. So I retired after 38 years in education. Congratulations, Kim, of course, to your next steps. And I was able to start working with IASB as a search consultant soon after I retired. And similar to my colleague, Dr. Vineyard, and she too is a retired superintendent from Western Cook County. She was in the Grange Highlands for several years. She also has a variety of administrative experiences, both at the elementary and high school levels from throughout the state of Illinois. My resume and her resume are both included in the folder of information that I shared with you. What I did provide for you is a folder that has a couple of different things. But I will want to go through the PowerPoint that I do have. Because it gives a good summary and overview of our process as an association. And I can make reference of some of the things that are in the folder as well as then spend time answering questions. I know they said 10 minutes, but they went on over. So I figured that's 10 minutes, that was 10 minutes for each of them. So that's 30 for me. But I will try to be respectful of your time as well. And if you do have questions at any point along the way, please feel free to ask. But as I, as I have shared with you at a different time, you know, the purpose obviously of the association is to serve the districts. And in the terms of the association, we are more than just a search firm. We provide a variety of services to school boards in the state of Illinois. We only serve districts in Illinois, obviously, we're a state association. But one of the, one of the departments and divisions within the School Board Association is the Executive Search Division. And we are very proud of the fact that we've become a very viable part of making school districts' search processes successful in the districts that we've worked with. We're really the only organization whose goal is to serve school boards and public schools in Illinois. We're not a headhunter. However, we are able to attract and also recruit very quality candidates for any of the administrative searches that we do. We do primarily superintendent searches for districts. We also do other district-level positions such as assistant superintendents, business managers, principals, executive directors for special ed co-ops and so on. So we do have a wide range of searches for districts as an association. We are the market leader in superintendent searches by the fact that not only do we serve and work with districts only in the state, we also have a very strong nationwide presence. We've been assisting districts since the 1960s. We're an equal opportunity search agency. We're dedicated to maintaining confidentiality of the candidates who apply with us. And that allows us to attract a very large pool of quality candidates. Because that's very important in the process for the confidentiality piece, especially at the beginning. So the candidates can feel comfortable as they enter into that process with you. As a state association and as a board, you're probably familiar with the fact that there's an IASB foundational principles of effective governance. And within that document, the primary responsibility that you as a board have is to employ a superintendent. So these are just a few of the highlights that we always want to, you know, present to boards as, as we begin talking about how we conduct this process. Even though we're a state organization, we have a very strong nationwide presence. We attract candidates from out of state. And this graph on the screen gives you kind of an idea over the last 10 years, how many out-of-state candidates have applied and ultimately been hired within the state of Illinois. We're a very active participant in the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers. There is a brochure for that organization on the left side of your, of your folder. That will give you a little bit better idea. But we work with 40 other states in doing the same thing that we do as far as helping districts find superintendents. We share information for out-of-state candidates. We share our best practice. And when we have an out-of-state candidate who applies here, I can get on the phone to the person who does the same thing that I do in that state and call them up and get a good background information on the candidate who we're talking about. So I think that sometimes the fact that we're a state organization, there's a perception that we're limited in our recruiting and our nationwide presence. But we cast a very wide net when we post a position. In fact, we have found that the first place that candidates from out-of-state look when they're moving to Illinois or relocating to Illinois as an administrator is on our website for vacancies. And we are connected with IAS's website as well, the Job Bank. So that's one of the first places where they will look. We also have now a very wide link of job sites that we post positions and advertise positions through. And I'll speak to that in just a few minutes. As far as attracting and recruiting candidates, we have a very extensive network, as I spoke about, different organizations that we work with that, that serve education in different capacities. I spoke about NASS and also we're very involved in the AESA, the Superintendent's Nation, National Organization. And we work very closely in using that as an agency in which we can recruit candidates from as well. We conduct workshops for aspiring superintendents. And so that's where we can kind of get a, kind of a good foot in the door with some of the candidates who are ready to become superintendents. And at our workshops, we'll meet them and we'll spend time with them. And we know that then when they do apply for positions, we can judge if we see them as being ready for their first superintendency through these workshops. Also then, we do have a network of over 7,000 potential candidates through recipients of our emails that we send out to the recipients of Higher Logic emails. And that's where we can promote vacancies through that. This also gives you a view of just some of the places where we advertise, the different nationwide organizations and statewide organizations. We have a very multicultural presence. We're very active in seeking a diverse pool of candidates for districts and making sure that that representation is a good process. Just a few pieces of the steps of our process that I'll quickly go through. We have a standard fee, it's based on your, on our enrollment. And then there are some additional add-ons that we, that we can include if a board chooses. We have found that not every district obviously is the same. Not every board wants the same kind of search. So we have developed a standard fee based on enrollment for a basic search that's very extensive. And we have found that pretty much most districts are very pleased and satisfied with just the basic search. Because we also include some of the bits of some of these other options within that, that basic search. However, there's a couple of other options that not everybody wants. And so we don't always include that. And we don't want to be, you know, boosting up our fee, you know, for everybody if it's something that not everybody wants to include. So I'll kind of go through this. Our standard fee for the district is 7,900 as it shows there. But recommended add-ons that are pieces that we feel that would be very important for 201 to consider in the process. Those are some additional fees that you'll, you'll see as we go through it. Besides designating a search coordinator, or in this case, it would be Dr. Vineyard and myself working together as search coordinators. We would assist in developing a timeline after you employ us. We would then sit down with you, come back to a meeting and come up with a specific timeline that we can look at. And beginning right away in August with the initial steps. And we would see that December would be a very viable option for completing the process and employing a new superintendent by that time. We find that most districts, when they start early enough like this is, they want to get done before the holidays. And that's certainly a very doable process. We usually find it's about a four-month timeframe from beginning to employment. And so that's something that, you know, it's always designed with you in mind. And so if you've got some other things that you think will play into that, we would certainly work with you at that point and read in the timeline itself. We do solicit input from, from the community and staff and you as individual board members. We would put that together as we're developing the profile of your next superintendent, the ideal candidate characteristics, as well as different experiences you would like to see. We do have an online survey that is very extensive and it gives opportunity to the public, to the community, to the staff, to, to provide us with input to then provide to you as a board. I also, and my colleague, we would interview you as individual board members to get that same type of input and feedback from you as we put together that profile. One of the optional and recommended pieces that kind of goes along parallel to that is gathering stakeholder input. And we would recommend the, the including of focus groups, meeting, public meetings with staff and with stakeholders to get their input into some of the needs of the district, the things that they see as what the next superintendent should have as far as characteristics and strengths and so on. And so that would then be something that we recommend as being an additional option. But not every district wants to do that. A lot of districts are very satisfied with the online survey itself. Online surveys also will include an open comment section if you wish as a board. It's not something you have to include, but, you know, most boards do. We always tell boards you have to be careful what you ask for in an open comment section. But also it's a very positive way to allow people to express their perceptions in the process. And so some boards don't really feel they need to do the focus groups with the stakeholders. That's why it is an optional piece in our, in our process. But I, we would recommend that that be done within the context of the process. Early on in the, you know, in the steps similar to the survey itself.
Is that additional, is that $1,500? Is that, that $1,500, is that included in the $10,900 price?
Yeah, yeah. That as a, these additional options that I, you know, going through, that's, that's part of that final.
Okay, thanks.
The 79 is, is the basic search fee. These are, there's two additional pieces that, one being this and one being another piece at the end that we are recommending. Additional components in the, in the search includes developing, you know, the ideal candidate profile, developing an announcement of vacancy that gets posted on all of the job sites that we are linked to. The vacancy is in the form of a brochure. There's a sample for you in the back of the right side of the folder for you of a search that we did this past year. That's posted in PDF form on the, on the job site. So that when somebody applies, it opens up the brochure. That's a chance for you as a board to sell yourself to, to potential candidates. It includes community information, includes district information, demographics, financial information, the key characteristics that were gleaned from the survey and from the interviews and the focus groups that we did early on. It gives a candidate kind of a good overview of what, what you're looking for. It includes, you know, specifics that you might be wanting in terms of experience as a, as a superintendent, experience at the district level, experience in a K or a pre-K 12 unit district and so on. And we can talk about those as we get more into that at another meeting. That's what, that's what would be included in that, in that brochure. There are some opportunities for, for additional advertising if you are interested. But we're finding that that's really not vital anymore, such as a paper advertisement in terms of Education Week or any other print item, print documents. We could certainly create an advertisement for you and we would just pass that cost on to you. But we, most districts choose not to do that. We would collect the applications after it's open. Probably about a five, four to five-week timeframe is generally what we find is being very successful in getting applications from candidates. We, and I keep saying we, myself and Dr. Vineyard as a team, we would be working together on this. We screen every application that is complete. We also make sure that those applications are from candidates who have current Illinois licensure. We don't want it to be July 1st next summer and your new superintendent that says, well, I just don't, I haven't got my license yet. Can't do that. We, it's not fair to you as a board. So we're very cognizant of, of having candidates. And even out-of-state candidates, when they express interest in, in applying, we make sure that they've at least started the process with ISBE to get their, to get their Illinois licensure in place, even before, hopefully before the interviewing time would come around. Because I think that's very important for you as a board to know that. We do some preliminary background information as far as gathering through, through talking to references. We cannot do a criminal background check because we're not the hiring entity. But we do a limited background inquiry for all of the candidates that reached through the final stages where we feel that we talk to their references and also people who they have not necessarily referenced. Because we feel that we know, and through myself and the other consultants that work through IASB, we have, we have a very broad base of people around the state who we can be in contact with to talk about these candidates as viable candidates for the superintendent of Westmont 201. We conduct screening interviews of the, of the top tier of candidates, usually about top 10 to 12 candidates that we've narrowed the applications down to. We will conduct screening interviews of them to get a better feel for their potential as a superintendent of District 201. And then we would narrow that down to a slate that we would want to present to you for interviewing. A couple of final steps, you know, I made reference to verifying the references. We finalize the slate of candidates and we would schedule their first round of interviews with you. Generally, we would bring a slate of probably six candidates to you. We found that's usually the best step as far as the interview piece is to bring you six that you as a board would interview initially. We recommend it only be the board doing those initial interviews. The more people you involve in those initial interviews, the more somebody likes somebody and everybody. And it's hard to come up with a consensus. And so we feel that the board should be the one doing the initial interviews. Narrow that down to, to maybe a slate of two finalists. At which point then, we would recommend that you possibly include other people in those final interviews. We also could do for you a practice interview session if you wish, a mock interview session. That would be an additional piece. But what we have done truly is But what we have done truly is to build in a lot of interviewing logistics into our regular piece of presenting the candidates to you at the end. So this is really something that sometimes boards just don't feel comfortable at all doing the interviewing, even after we've talked to them about the interviewing piece and worked through some of the logistics of that, the questions and so on. They still want more work with that. And then we would certainly be able to come in and schedule maybe a, you know, a couple-hour or half-day mock interview session with you as a board where myself and my colleague would be, would actually be potential candidates, and we'd walk through the whole thing and evaluate your interviewing process as a board. And that would be something if you might be interested. We, like I said, we do assist you with interviewing protocols as part of the search process anyway. And so that's something that we spend a lot of time on. We, you know, talk about question development and so on. An optional recommended piece, the second one that we would see as being valuable for the district, would be to conduct stakeholder interviews of the finalists. Sometimes it's hard for the stakeholders and the board to be doing this together with the finalists. And we would come in and one of our consultants would come in and facilitate that stakeholder piece. And that could be including of other administrators, of school groups, community groups, and so on in that last step with your finalists. And we would conduct the stakeholder interviews while the board is responsible for the individual interviews as a Board of Education. One of the other pieces that I think is important that kind of differentiates us, and obviously you've kind of seen as we go through this, there's a lot of similarities here, and I know that, we recognize that. But we're not just done when the contract is signed by your next superintendent. We think that there's a variety of additional things that need to take place. One of the key things is that board-superintendent relationship to start to be established. Our field service department and the field service director for our district would provide a free workshop to you, generally it's about a half-day workshop, with you and the new superintendent sometime within that first six-month timeframe or somewhere around there, we can be flexible on that, where you would then, with that field service director and the new superintendent, work through some topics that, whatever you really want. It could be on goal-setting, it could be on evaluation, it could be on a variety of other things that you see as important for that new superintendent to know and for the field service director to work with you from a school board's perspective on that. So that is, that's a part of it as well. We don't, also, we don't just leave you with that. We do have a guarantee. We make sure that, we have both a statement of insurance and also a guarantee. The statement of assurance is that we are with you until that right person is found. Maybe that group of six didn't bring to you the person that you see as the right fit. We would go back and, you know, to the next tier or some additional candidates, we could reopen the search at no cost. A variety of things that could happen there to make sure that that continues until that right person is found. The other piece that is important to know is that we don't hesitate within that first year, at the end of that first year, if you or the candidate or the new superintendent feels that it's just not working out, we would come back and do another search at no cost to the board as well. We've only had to do that one time in the seven years that I've been doing this. You see on this slide, the recommended services, the other pieces are there if you were to choose so, but we would recommend that these things would be part of what we would provide. The follow-up training we see is very important, it's complimentary. Why choose this kind of a summary? We are responsible only to you as a board. Obviously, that's what we do as an association. It's your search, we do the hard work. Our goal is to bring you the best candidates and ultimately the best superintendent because we know, and I specifically know, that that's exactly what the community wants, is the best candidates brought to you. And that's our goal, is to make sure that that's what happens. Our retention rate is very good. Fifty-seven out of 62 superintendent positions that's been filled over the last three years are still in those, have made it through the first contract and they're into a second contract. I mentioned our statement of assurance, our guarantee of services, our national presence. We've got a lot of experience. There's usually about 120 superintenances that change hands every year in the state of Illinois. Of that, there's a good number that are done specifically by boards of education. Either they do a search like this themselves because they think that they can do that or they promote from within. After that, those who, those searches that are done by outside firms, whether it be for-profit firms or the association, we do the majority of those in the state. We do approximately 25 to 30 searches a year. We've got six, now we'll be having seven consultants that work for our organization, and we are the market leader in that respect. We've worked with over 600 school districts in the last 10 years conducting searches for them. We feel that, we feel that as your association, we know the goal is to provide the best education for the students of your district. I know that personally, that that's your goal as a Board of Education, and I really feel that our process is comprehensive, it's cost-efficient, and it is a fiscal decision, and I know that as a former superintendent. I know that it's a fiscal decision as well. And so I feel that my obligation is to give you the best service for the best price. And I know that both as a former superintendent and as a consultant for the association, and that's what I try to do. Real quickly, the rest of the material in the brochure, or, excuse me, in the folder. Brochure is on the left side, just gives kind of an overview of different aspects of our organization. Material on the right gives a more specific breakdown. The first items that are stapled together have a letter to the board president and also a summary of the quote. The thicker items that are stapled together behind that, more extensive explanation of the steps of the process. Then there's also a sample brochure, as I mentioned, for Addison School District, which is a search that I did last year, and then resumes of Dr. Vineyard and myself. So, again, a lot of information in a short period of time, a lot of duplicate information. So if you have questions that maybe can help specify, you know, how we're going to do a better job for you, I would be more than happy to try and answer that.
I've got one question. The stakeholder feedback focus groups or gathering forums, how many are included at that?
I'm sorry.
How many of the focus groups are included for the $1,500?
As many as we need. And you, we try to keep them small enough that we can have vital, viable discussion. And so we try to schedule them throughout the course of a day or a couple of days and evenings if need be, and try to keep those groups small. And then we, as we interview the people and we record their responses, and then that gets shared back to the Board of Education. So it kind of depends, but I think, you know, knowing the district, knowing the community, you know, there's a lot of different interest groups. I think it's important to get their input and to involve as many different groups, including students, as we can in that focus group piece.
Oh, sorry, the focus group piece, is that the second optional add-on? The one about facilitate in-district stakeholder group interviews?
They're kind of, you know, the terms kind of use interchangeably. The first group is to get input with some of these different focus groups. The last one that's an option is to have whatever the board sees as who they want to include in the interviewing process and conduct those with stakeholders in focus groups.
I see, okay.
The initial focus group is primarily gathering input to supplement the survey and to supplement that, the initial steps of gathering feedback from the community and the staff.
So if it has to be over a couple of days, it wouldn't, because it says $1,500 per day, per con-
It would, it would, it would be, that'd just be the one cost, it wouldn't be multiple.
I have a quick question. You know, again, it's a really busy hiring time. The season right now is more intense than it's ever been. I'm sure you are very busy as a search, as the search component of your organization. How would you prioritize this search over other searches that you're working on?
That's a good question because I want to prioritize, I want to prioritize this search from a personal perspective. But I think that we balance each other out very well. And we involve all the other consultants as well as just Dr. Vineyard and myself who happen to be the ones working out of the Lombard office. And so I think that that's, you know, that's key. She also knows that I have a vested interest, and that's why I think it's important for her to be the face of the search. I think that's important for the board as, you know, something that, you know, people need to know that, you know, there's two of us that are working as a team and she's going to have a lot to bring to the process. And I think that that's a key thing because of the uniqueness of that. But I think that, you know, we prioritize every search, you know, as best we can in our own minds, obviously, and in the work that we do. But we do try to break it up very, so that we're not too much involved in a district, you know, with the different searches that we do. And it is a busy, will get to be a busy time, but I think, you know, getting started early now is good for you and we'll be able to get a lot of this preliminary work done early on in August and September and be ready to interview come October with a solid slate of candidates.
Thank you.
And I think you asked a question earlier, you know, with the earlier group too as far as, you know, being an advocate for the district. And I think that's what you want in not only having the best superintendent brought to you, but also making sure that that process is able to work to sell the district to potential candidates. And I think that that's something that we as a team can do very, very well because I think that her experience in a small district nearby as superintendent, as well as my experience in a district as a superintendent, and also my knowledge of the community and of the district, together we can build a good process, a good step in the process as far as being advocates and getting the right information to you as a board as we enter into that part of the process.
Right, thank you.
And that was a great question as far as, you want somebody who's an advocate for the district from tonight on, so.
Do you envision bringing in candidates that have experience as superintendents? Or would it be first-time superintendents? What are your thoughts on that?
I think that's a great question. I think that knowing the district, I think you're going to have some quality superintendents who are interested in coming here. And I think that's a good thing. It's a reflection on the district, first and foremost. It's a reflection on the district. And I think that, you know, there's also some very quality candidates who are not yet superintendents but are ready to be, whether they're assistant superintendents or some district-level type of position. But, so I think it's going to be a good mix. I think the pools, we found that the pool of candidates during this past year for searches that we did was very, very strong and surprisingly large. But I think that it's also a transition time over the, after candidates have gotten through these last couple of years, they're ready to say, "Okay, I'm done, I'm ready to be done." And I understand that. And so I think that, you know, there's a lot more strong, the pools are stronger than maybe we were anticipating. I guess that might be the best way to answer it. And I see that continuing on for this year. A couple of the searches that have already started that we're working with, there's very, very strong pools already beginning to develop. So in answer to your question, I think that, and you as a board can decide, either based on the input that is gathered initially or just your own preferences. You can decide some of the specifics that you want in the candidates that we bring to you, such as experienced superintendent. I mean, if you want somebody who's an experienced superintendent, you know, we would put that in the brochure, and those are the people that we would screen to bring to you, would be only those. It provides a filter that is going to narrow down the field, but it's certainly something that's up to you. We would, I would probably encourage it to be promoted as superintendent experience preferred. That helps us, we know that that would be a preference, but if we see strong candidates who are assistant superintendents or other positions, we think that that would be important for you to at least, we would talk to them in the screening interview process. And if they rose to the top, we would certainly bring them to you. Same way with, you know, experience, I think experience in a unit district is very important. And I think that's something that we would recommend. I would recommend putting that as a unit district experience preferred, unit district administrative experience preferred or central office experience preferred. So I think that's key because, you know, I don't have to tell you, unit district has unique needs compared to an elementary district or a high school district.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Can you speak to like the networking piece of it? That seems to be one of the pieces that's kind of the most differentiated. You know, pulling in folks that might not see the, might not see that we've posted, you know, into the process because we know that, are you guys, you know, this person needs to apply for this, you know? Can you speak to that?
Right, and, you know, we've often said, kind of facetiously, that we attract, we don't have to recruit, we attract. And that's kind of, you know, not necessarily true anymore, but at the same time, we do attract and we do through a variety of places where we not only advertise, but we also go and make our presence known at conferences and so on. We are able to go out and seek out candidates that would be viable candidates for you to be considering as a next superintendent here. And so as far as the tapping on the shoulder, if we know of candidates who would be very viable considerations, you know, we would, you know, encourage them to apply. That's about the most that we would promise would be encourage them to apply. We don't guarantee anybody an interview because we feel that it needs the best, needs to be the best slate of candidates that we bring to you after we've gone through the screening of the applications and screening interviews and so on. So, but we want to make sure that if there's people that we know, especially sitting superintendents, that might be worthy of your consideration, we might at least make sure they know that, you know, we would, you know, hope that they might apply. But I think that a district like ours, or like, a district like ours, I think, you know, it's going to be known as being a very quality opportunity for somebody. And so I think that there's going to be that attracting that does happen. You know, the reference to the Field of Dreams, you know, if you build it, they will come. Yeah, they will come. He doesn't think so, I do. Other questions? And that's a great question because I think, you know, the fact that we only serve districts in Illinois, people then sometimes don't think that we have a nationwide presence, but we do. We draw candidates from all across the country and we make our presence known in the other states as well. And so there will be out-of-state applicants and candidates, but there'll be a strong group of candidates from suburban area from Illinois as well. Other questions? I know I've gone over my allotted 10 slash 30 minutes. If not, I really appreciate your time and being able to come back and talk to you again. I think that it's, you know, it's a vital, vital part of your role as a board and I admire everything you do as a Board of Education. And I can say that very honestly. You've done great work over the past couple of years and I appreciate that a lot from my own personal perspective. I would really welcome the opportunity to work with you, as with Dr. Vineyard, as we work together and kind of bring a really, you know, strong focus on what's best for the district. So I appreciate the opportunity tonight. And I did leave with Kevin the contract, and I would imagine that you're going to approve it maybe at another time, approve or vote on it. So optimistically, I already left the contract with him.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions or anything, please feel free to either contact me directly, my information's in there, or certainly go through Kevin as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, best of luck.
So it's my understanding that we're going to vote next meeting, right?
Next, next board meeting.
July.
And just if I can jump in as far as the timing of that. As soon as, as soon as that does take place, and if we are going to be, if we would be the choice to do the search, we will begin right away with, as soon as you would sign the contract, and we would post the vacancy right away on our website and on IESA's website, even before the brochure, the announcement of vacancy brochure is developed yet because we want to get the word out there that we're doing the search for the district. In the meantime, that, those initial steps take place that would take us into August, but we would get that in place right away and really begin scheduling the focus group input meetings and get the survey ready to get out there right at the beginning, you know, at some point in August, right before school starts. That's a great time for people who are coming back to school, are thinking about education, thinking about schools, thinking about the year, and it's a good time to get their input on a survey as well as in a public meeting, so. Thank you very much, I appreciate it a lot. Bye, Kim.
So Kevin, as far as like our, like the board discussion of weighing the two options, does that happen at the next meeting?
Right, we can do it that way. We can have first as a discussion item.
And then as an action item. Okay, okay. So how does it kind of, I think this would be the first time that we'd have an action item that's like a this or that. Like normally our action items are yes or no. So how does that, is it like two separate action items?
You would have, an action item would be, you know, to approve a search firm for the superintendent's vacancy. And then as part of your discussion, you would have a straw poll, you know, as to which- And then as part of your discussion, you would have a straw poll, you know, as to which of the firms.
Okay.
So then the motion can be read, you know, to engage into an agreement with whatever the, the group is.
Okay. Well, so do we need to do any discussion, like weighing of the options right now?
Do that if you would like to, um, or you can just wait until that slide board meeting.
What would you guys like to do?
I think we could, could talk a few minutes right now.
Sure. Yeah.
I, I mean, I have some off the cuff sort of reaction and it has to do with, um, just the price tag and the differential in the price tag and just, I, I, in my mind, in my mind, um, the difference in the price tag isn't enough to, in my mind, to be a, a factor. Because it's a, if you look at the, even just a three-year contract for a superintendent and you wash $10,000, $12,000 over three years, you know, that's a, that's just, could be the difference between one superintendent salary and the other. I, I don't, to me, when you're making this level of decision, and I'm not saying that I'm pro or con one or the other option. I'm just saying to me, the price tag differential, although it is substantial in, in, in a percentage, on a percentage term, on a, on a nominal basis, when you look at the, at the salary of a superintendent, it's, it's a rounding error. So just wanted to throw that out there.
What was B W P sixteen? Sixteen thousand, I think. I'm looking for it.
I rounded it up a little because there were some other.
There were some other stuff.
Couple other things. So closer to probably eighteen, yeah.
Oh, eleven thousand versus twenty thousand even.
Yeah.
I guess you're talking about a nine thousand dollar difference. It's three thousand dollars a year over a three-year contract.
Right. The most important position in our district. Yeah. I, I tend to agree. I, I didn't think the difference in cost was.
It's, it's double, but it's, again, on a nominal.
But in the grand scheme, it's not fifty thousand dollars double.
I guess my question is though, like what more are we getting?
That's a whole, that's, to me, that's like that debate, right?
Yeah. Honestly, I was struggling to, like, I'm trying to do like a T chart thing here and it's very similar products, so.
It is very similar products and I, I, um, was looking through the proposals to see if they've, you know, listed, um, recent placements. I mean, I know there's references, so maybe we could get, um, information from the references that would help us differentiate. Um, I mean, I, I, to be honest, I liked that, um, the first group, B W P sent their full team here. I mean, I think that shows already that they're putting some priority and bandwidth into pitching the search. I like that they stuck to our guidelines of the 10-minute, uh, presentation outline. I mean, I don't want to be nasty about that, but I, I think that's being respectful of our, our guidelines that we put forward, um, from the beginning. Um, I, but beyond that, I can't say that anything stood out to make the price differential, you know? Otherwise, other than like, who have they placed recently? That would be interesting to know. What are the references say? Um, and then I'm a little irked that the I A S B guide didn't stick to the, to the timeframe intentionally. Actually, he told us he wasn't going to and then he didn't. You know, it's kind of like, well, but we asked you to.
The mentorship thing, was that a little different? Like what else are differences that you guys?
I mean, the mentorship, I think B W P said it was a year and I A S B said they need training.
Day workshop or something.
Yeah, they do it with, with the board and the superintendent.
Yeah, which I like.
That's what he has proposed.
Yeah, it seems like the follow-up was, the post kind of start was, was different. And then the, the networking piece, I think, was also a, a difference potentially.
I, yeah, I, I think, I think that, first of all, there's a lot of information for both. There's none of us that can assimilate all this information all in, in one gulp here tonight. So I think there's homework to be done by, by everyone. Um, again, I don't, I'm not going to lie, I don't do a lot of homework outside of these board meetings. It's not as, not as much as I would like to do, but with this one, this is, again, this is the number one decision we're going to make. And I think it's, we all have some homework to do. The one thing that, that, that you just said that's really, to me, um, important is these references. Because I, I, I'm in a commercial role and have been for a long, long time. These presentations, you just, you learn a lot more from their, from their clients than you, than you can learn from anyone else. And, and, and if we have the opportunity to re, to talk to some of the people who have had recent placements with the other of these organizations, that I think that would probably be really informative.
Well, how could we get that without it becoming individual homework for us?
I don't know.
Who's going to do the project?
I don't know.
So I know B W P put references in their proposal. Did I A S B, did they, did they both give us references upfronts?
Or could they?
They could.
Yes, that's something we could.
Two is you can, um, you can go to the I A S B website and they post, they list like their most recent.
Hires?
Hires or, you know, that they, you know, that they've been involved in the search and.
Didn't they snag John from us? But didn't they snag John from us?
Yes.
What, I A S B or? I A S B. Yeah.
Yeah, they did the search for, uh.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, so yeah, you can go to their website and find out their most recent placements and then that'd be a matter of reaching out to those districts.
They, they have them actually in here, so, um, it's in the packet.
I A S B does.
Yes. I A S B does and.
I think it's in the, I think it's in the B W P packet on board docs.
Yeah, that one is, that one has the references on the board docs.
Mm-hmm. So I mean, I'd be fine with dividing and conquering and calling a couple of these just to get, I mean, if it's, if, if we hear all positive stuff from all of the people we call, then it's, it comes back a wash and then we really are just looking at price point as the differentiator.
I guess my question is, when you call, who are you going to ask? Superintendent that got hired by the, that they directed to the job?
It's a great question.
I, I don't know who to ask.
That's a good question.
Talk to a board member. I would want to.
So.
I feel like a board member.
B W P has a board member listed and the superintendent listed.
So I, I would also just say, um, Mark Cross over at D sixty-three, uh, serves on SACAD with me and so I will see him tomorrow.
And he's from, from B W P. So I could, I could like.
Yeah.
Check in with him.
And Omar also is on Keeneyville, um, and I'll see his, one of his board members tomorrow as well. Good thing for that SACAD board.
Look at there.
Man, wasn't sure that was ever going to pay off.
Kim and Kevin, do you guys have any thoughts or recommendations or guidance or Anthony, um, how?
I think B W P, they'll be more aggressive to going towards a candidate that is interested in being a superintendent or wants to leave a district to become, you know, a superintendent for Westmont. So they're more approaching the candidates from my experience.
Your experience being knowing how they work or?
Yes. Yeah.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing, I guess, from your part?
It really depends, it really depends on the board. It really depends on what the board is looking for in a superintendent. Um, I just worked with B W P for the two districts I've worked in and they're just, they recruit. They'll go after the candidate that the board and the community sees fit to become the superintendent.
And on that note, is that something that, just for everybody to think about? They stated it, we're a highly wanted district. We're recognized. There's a lot of recognition here. I mean, think about all the people moving to this district to go to our schools. Do we need them to go approach people? Or do we just need the process of, hey, help us figure out who we want and go for it? That's just something for everybody to ponder then.
And Kevin and, and the board and, you know, the last board and this board has all done a, you know, Kevin and Kim and Jack and the principal, like have all done a boatload of work in the last twelve years to really make us.
Attractive.
Stand out.
Really attractive. And I do, I, I do think both of them called out that Westmont is particularly attractive for a couple of different reasons.
That, that said, it is super competitive out there.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's also true. And we, we like us a lot.
Right.
Right.
Well, yeah, I do, there's something I don't hate about the idea of them finding somebody who like matches this sort of profile versus just, because it is a nice job to have, working for a good school district, just anybody who sees it applying.
Right.
I think maybe it's a more, um, I don't know, kind of specific match, I guess.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, I mean, one of the things that we don't, we haven't talked about as a, as a board yet anyway is what is it exactly we're looking for, you know? I mean, I almost asked the question and then I thought, you don't know your own answer, so don't ask that question. But like what, what kind of superintendent would make a good superintendent based on what you know about our school district, right? And, and, um, I guess, uh, about, you know, Anthony's comment and, and, and Angie's comment, you know, if, it might be that we're looking for something unique, even, even if we're an attractive school district, even if there's a lot of movement at the time where, you know, there are a hundred and twenty candidates out there that are all looking for, uh, a superintendent role in, in Illinois. Maybe it might be that what we're looking for might be unique. We haven't even talked about that yet. And so we might need someone who's, or who can help with that, although I don't know that I think that I A S B couldn't, you know? But anyway.
Yeah. So do we want to do some reference checks? Does that sound like a good next step in between? I mean, I'll volunteer to do.
Volunteer to do at least one or two.
And then I think Leah's conversation. Yeah, and if I can, where's the list for I A S B? Because I could see if anybody's on.
It's in this.
Because it's a combined meeting tomorrow, like.
Great.
Board of Control, Board of Directors, Boards of Boards of Boards, it's everybody.
They don't, they don't call it a reference list. They just, this is, it's in, it's on page seven of this.
This is I A B.
Of the big packet?
I A S B, in steps in the superintendent's search process. And it's page seven and they have this grid that's their recent placements.
Okay.
So we could just call, find out a board member who would talk to us in any one of these districts.
So Kim and Anthony, can you kind of confirm that financially we're okay with either decision? Or are we like in a tight spot where we really shouldn't pay double? I feel like we're operating under this assumption right now.
You're asking these two people to tell us to pay double on something. They're never going to say that.
Well, well, right, but, but I, I think that is, like, we're, we're all like exploring this and like, is that, if that's an unsound choice, um, then I think we need to slow down, maybe slow down a little bit on the.
I'm sorry, I missed that. I missed that. What was the unsound choice?
I don't know if it's an unsound choice. Like to Carlos's, Carlos opened the conversation with, in the grand scheme of hiring a superintendent, paying that extra money for a more nuanced search, I think is what we would get, um, and a more nuanced, slightly more nuanced process with B W P. Like, we all kind of agreed like, yeah, that's, it's worth the money. Do we have the money, I think, is the question. Like, I don't want to operate under that assumption if that's not the case.
Good question.
I'll start. So like Kevin said, when the board has a priority, somehow made it work. So, um, it, it's not technically earmarked in the budget, but we are going to come in better than projected. Um, the other thing that the board, I, I think should be aware of is, you know, there may be the intention to, um, hire a superintendent at a little bit lower salary than, than what Kevin is, is making, so that there's always some room there, um, you know, to incorporate that search cost by having, you know, obviously some savings in the salary from Kevin's retirement.
Well, and that savings in salary would just come from fewer years of experience, right? I can.
It de, it depends. I mean, there's so many variables that go into.
Into the contract. Okay. That I'm not familiar with, so.
It's, you know, years of experience, it's what type of district somebody has worked in. You know, there, there's a lot of different factors that determine that salary.
Okay. So on the I A S B list, there's nobody from DuPage?
There's one.
There's one, Addison.
Addison.
Addison, I don't think serves on, but I'm going to check.
But, in that note.
Anne's brought up a good one.
I can call John and see how their interview process with John. I know he's on vacation right now, so maybe after the fourth, just shoot him a text message and ask him how he felt about his process.
I mean, he owes us just a tiny bit.
Just a little bit.
Just a small amount.
Okay, so we have.
So I'll cover two from.
From B W P.
B W, B W P tomorrow.
And then we just need, well, I'll take something off the I A S B list, but I'm not sure which one yet because I don't know any of these people.
Are we volunteering to take a call here or what are we doing?
Yes.
I'll, I'll take, I'll take one off of I A S B. I'll take Willow Springs and it's going to be my target. But I don't, I don't know anyone there, but I'll just call and say, who can I talk to?
Right. It works.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take one from, uh, the B W P. Try to give Homewood Flossmore a call.
And I don't see the, I don't have, the B W P is in the board, is in the board packet, right? It's in the.
No, it's in the, on the.
Board docs?
Yeah, it's in their board docs.
Yeah.
Board docs, that's what I meant. Sorry.
And that's something we can, still following the rules, report back to each other in between this meeting and the next one? Or would we do that?
Question. You know, I'd probably, it's a little cleaner if you shared with me and then I can share in a board update.
In board docs? Okay, okay. Perfect. Okay.
Anything else?
I, yeah, one more thing on this topic and that is, and I don't, I don't know how it figures into this conversation exactly. Um, but just to the degree that it might influence our choice on one of these two search firms, what indication do we have about internal candidates?
Assumptions. I think we have assumptions.
And can we discuss that in open?
Right.
That's why I didn't bring it up.
Well, I think, I think you can ask the question open, you know, as long as we're not talking about strengths and weaknesses or anything of that nature.
No.
Um, really, I, I couldn't tell you today if when posted, who would be, who would definitely apply.
You cannot?
No. I know, I know individuals who have the licensure, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they would.
Understood.
Would apply.
Understood. Okay, that is, I guess it's a non-factor then.
I, although I feel like the I A S B would invite more internal versus B W P maybe? I don't know. But I don't know.
Okay, well, I guess it doesn't, it's inconsequential.
Yeah. Like you said. Yep.
Okay, great. So we'll discuss and vote at the next meeting. Awesome. All right. So, um, next up on the agenda then is, um, information about our certificate of excellence.
Just wanted to, um, update the board that we just, um, this week, uh, received of the certificate of excellence for our FY twenty-one audit. And this is the sixteenth year that the district has received that award.
Amazing.
Yes, it is.
Um, next on the agenda then is the monthly financial statements.
The month of April, financial statements are attached, um, for review. During the month of April, we received four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from the state. There's twenty-six thousand dollars of, um, FY twenty-one payments and three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of FY twenty-two payments, voucher, but not released, um, to the district at this time. In the Ed and TORT funds, revenues are slightly higher than the prior averages and we received three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of fiscal year twenty-two payments and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of that is for evidence-based funding. And then all of the, um, voucher, but at least repayments are in the Ed fund. And, um, the operations and maintenance fund, revenues, um, vary over the past few years and they're slightly higher than the prior year averages. In the transportation fund, again, they fluctuate from year to year and they are above, um, the prior year averages. And we did receive a hundred and three thousand dollars, um, from the state, um, this month for their mandated categoricals. Um, as far as expenditures go, in the Ed and TORT fund, expenditures are slightly above the prior year average both with and without contingencies. The O and M fund is seventy-five point one-nine percent spent to date and seventy-two point six-five percent, with contingencies and compared to sixty-seven percent last year. And then again, in the transportation fund, expenditures vary from year to year because of COVID. And then again, in the transportation fund, expenditures vary from year to year because of COVID and, um, everything else. So it's difficult to compare from year to year, but we are, um, on target with the budget there. And then, um, the, uh, fund balances are, um, attached and April is the low point, um, balances. We start receiving tax revenue in May, so those fund balances will go up. We did receive two, um, payments in May. Anthony will, will, will report on that for you next month. And, um, we anticipate tax payments being a little bit, um, ahead of schedule. So they're scheduled to do one more, um, payment. This year, so we'll actually receive three payments. This fiscal year, typically we receive two, so our revenue will be a little higher than projected. And then the student activity accounts are attached as well as the lunch report. And then when you look at the investments to, again, um, one of the, you know, lower points in our investment, um, balances as well. Does anybody have questions?
All right, next on the, um, agenda for information and discussion is the five-year plan.
Okay, so tonight, um, we have the five-year plan for you. And, um, it took a little bit while to do because we've been, um, working on updating things and taking, backing out some of the S R funding, so that we get, um, a true picture of what, um, what our revenues expenditures will look like without some of all the additional, um, federal money that we've received. There's also been, um, a lot of changes in terms of some of the revenue, um, and where it's come from. So we've had a lot of additional revenue, um, in our national, in our, um, food service program, but it's come from different, um, different sources. So typically, we receive that revenue from the National School Lunch Program, but we've had revenue from the Summer Food Service Program in the past. We budgeted one way, we received it a different way. Some of that funding was a lot, um, at a much higher rate than we typically receive. So a lot of differences going on over the last two years because of COVID. And again, our revenues and expenditures have been very skewed because of that. So kind of went back to FY nineteen, such twenty, and kind of looked at, at our budget and said, okay, and, and kind of project things from there. So, um, what this forecast does, it looks at, um, five years of audited financial information. It's based off of, um, the FY twenty-two current budget. And we incorporate the tax levy, um, the equalized assessed valuation, enrollment and other district assumptions. So this is just, um, the, a pictorial of the fiscal year twenty-two budget. And again, property taxes comprise eighty-two percent of our revenue. So, um, heavily reliant on property taxes, we, um, get very little funding from the state and federal government. When we look at our tax levy, you can see we start with twenty sixteen and project out to twenty twenty-six. You can see, um, E, uh, CPI is low as point seven percent. And we've kind of stabilized off into that two point one percent range. We know, uh, what FY twenty-one was, one point four percent. We know twenty twenty-two is gonna be five percent. We're projecting another year of five percent. We've had, we're experiencing high inflation. And then, uh, look, projecting that it will taper off and, and go back to more normal rates after that. We look at our, um, new growth, um, which is outside of the tax cap. So for twenty twenty-one, um, this year we had four point six million dollars. And then, uh, dropping it down to two point five million going, um, forward. So this is a little bit tricky, um, so we might go, well, we had four point six, why are you dropping it down? We've had between one point one and two point seven million dollars of new value over the last seven years. We know the housing market has gone crazy the last couple of years. And so, um, we also, um, know that there's, there's some new growth coming, but, um, we've got some new development by the library and stuff that will be coming on. But again, Westmont is, our district is landlocked, so there's not a lot of spaces other than teardowns for, um, new value to come from. And then, um, some of our new construction that we're seeing right now is located in the TIF district and the district won't receive that new growth value.
Kim, sorry, can I ask a question now? Is that okay?
Yep.
With, with this graph, you don't have the history. You just walked us through it very briefly. Is two and a half percent, two and a half million, excuse me, consistent with?
Correct, with future year, with, um, previous years, yes. Okay, so it's ranged between one point one and like two point seven. And then, um, this gives you the sensitivity, so a one percent change, um, plus or minus in the CPI, gives you about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar plus or minus, um, value. And then new property, a million dollar change is a plus or minus forty-three thousand dollars. So you can see there's not a lot of revenue, additional revenue being generated off of that new growth. Then, um, one of the other assumptions, um, in this, uh, five-year plan is, um, CPPRT has typically been, you know, we budgeted about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're projecting it at four seventy-five for next year. We actually received a lot more than four seventy-five this year. A lot of districts did and it was, it was a surprise to our whole DuPage Business Manager group. And so we really don't know, um, if that's going to continue, if it's just kind of an anomaly based on, um, some things that have been happening during the COVID years. So we're taking the more conservative approach at the four seventy-five with, um, which is kind of, they projected what, um, was projected. And then, um, those updates come out in August, so Anthony can look and see for the final budget, if he's got any additional updates that might change that projection. The other revenue we looked at, updated this food service sales to resume. So right currently, all students are eating for free. That should be changing for next year, so put that revenue back into the buckets where it belongs that way. If something changes, then that can be updated for the final budget. Student fees, um, we did raise them slightly, but again, they're comparable to, um, what we received this year. And then we do have a decrease in rental income from SACIT in the O and M fund. But part of that's offset by projections of, um, the TIF revenue coming in, so. Then as terms of general state aid, we're budgeting that, um, flat at the current FY twenty-two, um, level. When we get that final amount, it's only gonna probably change about a thousand dollars. We just, again, we do not receive much, um, general state aid because we're a property-rich district. And then our, um, categorical grants, they're projected at preliminary FY twenty-three levels right now. So we, we do have, um, a lot of those figures in, so I built those into the projection. And then, um, again, National School Lunch revenue's been reflected. And then we moved the S R revenues because they're not ongoing. And we haven't spent as much of the S R money as we thought or in the same ways. So it made sense to back it out and then in the budget, it can be put in. And then again, any increase in grant revenue, when you, if you get that revenue, you have to spend it. So it, it, it doesn't have an impact on our fund balance. The only way it would is if we had, um, existing salaries that we were able to offset through some of that grant. You've already got that expense, but you can offset it by the grant. And we may be able to go back and do some recapture of things that we spent this year too, because those grants allow that. So I'll be working a little bit with Nadine and Anthony about some, um, options for that as well. And, um, with S R three, you know, we set aside six hundred thousand dollars for the HVAC system, after we issue bonds and after we get those bids in. If we have some S R three money, you may want to re, um, look at what S R money is left and decide if you want to put a little bit more toward the HVAC system or something, that would be an option as well. Then we have the, um, expenditures by object for the current, this current year budget. And again, salaries and benefits are, um, our greatest expense. We're a people business and, um, so that makes sense. So in terms of the forecast salaries, there are increases are in here per contract, stipend increases per contract. Other staff budgeted at three percent. Wespa budgeted, um, per contract and the WCMA budgeted at three percent. We know we'll have to adjust the WCMA, um, but there's not a reason to put a dollar amount in there right now if you're in the process of negotiations. So we, you know, those can, that can be done, um, for the final. And then, um, we have not been fully staffed. So we know, um, you know, budget, budgeted at a fully staffed level, but you know, there's gonna be some play in here, um, for that as well, because we haven't had all those expenses this year. The addition of the one point oh H R P, our position has been included. We did maintain the school psychologist and so, but we also eliminated several S R staff positions, though that, that was reflected as well. And again, as I said, we have budgeted for full staffing levels and hope to attain those. But again, not sure that will happen. And then, um, health and dental benefits, so, uh, ten percent annual increase for FY twenty-three and then eight percent for the years, um, beyond that. Our claim experience has been running high. It ran high last year, it is continuing to run high. So I do anticipate and everyone should be fully prepared for a large renewal increase for next year. We've just, we've had some really bad experience claims this year, so. In the ed fund, purchase services and supplies are a two percent, um, increase for each year. Special ed tuition, five percent increase and capital outlay, we've ma- we've maintained flat. O and M fund, two percent increase, um, for FY twenty-three. We will look a little bit more at, um, our natural gas and stuff to see if we need to make a few adjustments there. Transportation fund, fifteen percent overall annual increase, um, for next year. Six percent for the following and then hopefully we get back to more normal ranges, three percent beyond there. And that fifteen percent, um, should cover both, even though we know Westway might be a little bit, um, higher. But we also have a lot of, um, transfer, expenses for taxis and stuff that we're hoping will go away and Sunrise will be able to, um, handle that. So that fifteen percent kind of wa- should wash out there. And then no increases in the tort fund. There's no anticipated legislative, uh, changes in school funding, no change to, um, the tax cap. Possible state TRS obligations are not included. That's been talked about for years and years. It's never come to, uh, to fruition, but could it? Yes. And then the known retirements are incorporated. So two, um, people retired, uh, teachers, um, at the end of this year. Four in FY twenty-three, one in twenty-four, four in twenty-five and one in FY twenty-six. And then, um, again, as I've indicated, FY two twenty, FY twenty-two budget is the basis, but with the removal of S R revenues and expenditures. And then, um, you can see, um, the aggregate revenue. So this is for our, um, ed, O and M, IRF Social Security, tort and transportation funds. And, um, so you can see what we're, where we're projecting things. You will notice that we've had, had a, projected a large, um, deficit balance, um, for FY twenty-two and that was purposeful because we are, we've approved the resolution to move two million dollars from the O and M fund to, um, capital projects. So that is purposeful deficit. And then projecting an overall in the combination of those funds of one point nine for next year. If you look at this, again, is those five funds. And, um, you can see that, um, the, the COVID years have been very difficult for us, but in terms of, um, finances, they've been good to us. Because you can see that our fund balances increased, um, from FY nineteen to twenty and again to twenty-one. We're projecting decrease. We know that we'll have the two million dollar decrease because of those transfers. We'll have also a decrease because, um, our working cash fund, um, we've been spending down, um, those bond proceeds. But we will come in better than this twelve point seven million dollars, um, that was projected in the, with the budget. So that line, um, and, and typically what we've seen, this is the first time that I've ever presented that the, um, when we go out to FY twenty-seven, we're out five years, that that red line is, um, above zero, that there's still a positive. It's always, you know, kind of fallen off the cliff. So, um, this is, this is a good thing. But again, um, yeah, one thing to, um, keep in mind is there's, you know, hundreds of variables in these projections. And as each one changes, the further out you get, the more, um, tendency there, you know, there are more inaccuracy there is. But what it, this does is give you a, a place, a starting point to say, okay, what kinds of decisions do we need to make going forward? And so obviously, when that budget gets prepared, um, for next month, again, you can look at, you know, all the actual, what we project for all the salaries and the actuals and all the people. We've had a lot of people moving in and out, resignations and new hires, things like that. We'll have, you know, a, a more precise number at that point. We'll be closer to what, um, what our, um, ending balance is gonna be. And so I anticipate that line is going to, going to move up. But again, it just helps you be mindful of what you're doing in subsequent years. And then again, um, the ed fund, so you can see, um, that the projected deficit is a lot lower for next year than, um, the current year. And again, that will be, the current year will be better than what is projected here as well. And then the O and M fund, again, um, looking at actually a positive balance, um, for the end. So, does anybody have questions?
Got a couple.
Okay.
So one is, um, this is a projection that goes out to twenty seven. You said that for the teacher salaries, which is a substantial amount of the budget, obviously, that you're making this, the assumption is per contract. Contract is up before the end of this period. So what does it assume beyond the period of the contract?
Three percent.
Thank you. And then the other question is maybe a little unfair, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. And that is, um, it seems that you've rightfully put together a conservative five-year plan. Do you feel, can you answer the question as to whether you feel more conservative on the spend side or on the revenue side? Where do you feel you've been more conservative?
Probably on the, on the expenditure side. The revenues are pretty, pretty true.
You feel pretty comfortable?
Yeah, it's the expenditure side, so we always put in a little bit, uh, you know, are we gonna maybe hire another teacher? The, uh, buildings don't, don't spend all of their budgets, um, every year, so there's a little bit money there. Yeah. And then you, you know, kind of the benefits, um, you never know exactly how many teachers are going, you know, how many staff members are going to take those benefits. You have a lot of, as you're building your budget, you have a lot, you know, we've had a lot of staffing changes and things like that. So, you know, trying and getting those new hires and so there's some movements there as well.
I ask the question because it, it, the thing I'm learning is that we, I feel like we have a lot more control over what we spend than what we, the money that comes in.
Right.
You know?
Yes, and that's the, like, you're not, you don't make anything, you don't make a product. We, we can't become more innovative and, you know, there's, there's not really many ways to create revenue. Where you can make an impact is in your spending decisions. So when you're looking, you know, so obviously salary and benefits are the biggest. So when you're looking, you know, so obviously salary and benefits are the biggest place. The other thing, you know, again, when you're, you know, looking at, you know, hiring the next superintendent, those types of things, you know, what, what programs? Are we adding new programs? Are we adding stipends? Those kinds of things. All of those things have an impact. And when they involve salary, that's ongoing. And it's more difficult sometimes to make cuts there than if it's things. And so again, you have an opportunity with some of these grants to offset existing salary and, you know, to make sure that all that money is being spent in the best possible manner. So again, if you have extra Esser money, is there a really great program that would benefit our students? Or should some of the extra money go toward the HVAC system? So those are decisions that, you know, you as a board can kind of keep in mind.
And the transportation piece, because there's, there's that piece of, we've traditionally offered transportation to all of our students without a fee.
No, we, no.
Or no?
No. The, our transportation is only, we've only offered it for those who are eligible.
Those who are, yes.
Because of living 1.5 miles.
Yeah.
Or in a hazardous zone. So if you want to offer transportation to all students, okay, well, first of all, you need to talk with Anthony about that because he's going to be mad. And that might be a, a large undertaking, but also then to determine if you're going to charge a fee.
There was a charge, a potential charge, yes.
Yes.
Because I know we've talked so much about transportation in the last two years.
And then unfortunately, you have to, you have to make sure that the bus company has capacity. So one of the things too, we've, we've always routed everyone who's eligible. So this year, what we're working on is routing only those students who have signed up and said, yes, they plan to take the bus.
I think that's what I'm thinking about is the routing piece, but yeah.
So potentially, we can reduce the number of routes or buses or something that will help also with, with the time, with the times that, you know, the routing times, so they can be more accurate at the beginning. And then obviously, if students who are eligible need to make a change and need to ride the bus later, they can add on later.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
All right. We'll move on to action items. The first action item is the approval of resolution authorizing the transfer of real property and approval of real estate sale and purchase agreement with the Village of Westmont for .826 acres of property at Westmont High School. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of real property and approval of real estate sale and purchase agreement with the Village of Westmont for .826 acres of property at Westmont High School as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is to approve the 2022, 2023 Administrator Contracts. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 Administrators, Administrators' Contracts for the following administrators. Tim Wyler, Lindsay, Lindsay Pietrak, am I saying her last name?
Peter Zach.
Peter Zach. I feel like I mess that up every time. Sorry, Lindsay. Michael Lipinski, Amy Quattrone, Kevin Weck, Laura Lopez, Tiffany Teresi, Nadine Norris, Anthony Rowley, Jamie Maxx and Joe Smith as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number three, approval of non-certified salary increases for 20, for 2021, 2022 school year. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the non-certified salary increases for the 2021, 2022 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number four, approval of non-certified salary increases for 2022, 2023 school year. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve non-certified salary increases for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Okay.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Avi?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number five, resolution providing for issue of approximately $6 million general obligation limited tax school bonds, Series 2022, for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on school bonds and authorizing the sale of the bonds to the purchaser thereof. And Kim, I think you were going to say a little bit about that.
Yeah. We actually have someone from Raymond James. So Linda Byron is here to talk about the sale process today.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay with this mask on?
Yep.
Okay. So I'm here for Liz, Elizabeth Hennessy, who was unable to attend tonight. What we did today was collect bids for the limited tax bonds for your working cash capitals. And we sent the term sheet out to seven banks. We've got responses from four banks with a firm bid and then one of the banks came in with an indicative bid saying they needed more time to review the credit. And this bank takes anywhere from two weeks to, you know, four weeks to review credit. And they've just been so swamped with requests that they could not give us a firm bid without reviewing everything from start to finish. So unfortunately, their bid was, as of today, it's almost over 60 basis points lower than the other four bids that we received. So after discussions with Kimberly and Gregory, we think, we thought we should probably wait till we can get a bid from them, a firm bid, which would be on June 30th, just because we've been doing a lot of bank placements lately. And this bank has won all the bids by at least 50 basis points over the, of the four banks that we actually received bids from. So, so what we're going to do instead of passing a regular bond resolution, we're going to pass what's called a parameters bond resolution tonight. And I can go over that, I think, Kimberly, did you give it, give that to them?
They have it in their board book, but if you could review that.
Sure. So, it's, it's like 20 pages long. The main things about it that you have to be aware of, first of all, we are not going to, so basically what it is, it gives parameters up. We are not going to go over when we do accept these bids on June 30th. And so the maximum par amount of the bonds will be six million, which is the amount you approved when you did the binding hearing. The principal payments will be, go out tilt to 33, so a little over 10 years. The maximum debt service will not exceed your current debt service extension base. And maximum coupon would be five percent. The bids we got today were anywhere from 380 to 420, so we're not going to bump up against that. But we just wanted to put five percent in there just in case for some reason we would decide to go with a public offering where we would take the bonds out. Raymond James would underwrite the bonds and we would take it to a public sale versus a bank placement. But as of today, just even with, that indicative rate was lower than if we would go through that whole process. And then just the call date on the bonds will be a 10-year call. And with that, with this, the way we structured it, I think Liz has probably went over this with you before, we're going out approximately 10, 10 years, where the first five years, we're going to fill your debt service extension base and starting in year six, which would be in about 2027. We left some room, so you can issue bonds again if the need arises. So I think that, is everything I have. Is there any questions?
Yeah. In the very simplest terms, so we're, we're basically just taking a little bit more time to approve the.
So they will, they will actually, so today, we're going to reject all those bids and then go back and they will solicit banks again.
Okay.
With that process and, you know, again, hoping that that gives the one bank.
Got it.
And maybe others.
Right.
Some time to come in and.
Because when we tell them that we're rejecting their bids, we're going to just say they were, they were too high and they didn't fit within what, what we were looking to have.
I see. Okay. So we got four back or four and a half, kind of?
Well, kind of four.
Yeah, four. So we want to get more.
Not necessarily more, but we want, well, we got, we want to get that one specific bank to come back and give us a firm rate. And they just, like I said, they just don't, can't do it, no. Originally that, they said July 8th and we were able to get them to come to June 30th just because we don't want to bump into the holiday and everything. So are there any other questions about anything?
So do we have to do anything with the action item at this point?
Yes, we do. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you'll have to pass the parameters resolution. And then, so what will happen on June 30th, we'll get the bids in. The parameters resolution allows the business officials and the president of the board to okay the bids that we get, because they'll have to follow these parameters. And so there won't be another, any more board actions. It's just the passing of parameters today.
Kim or Anthony, could, why don't you two let us know what happens on the 30th, the board?
Oh, yes. Yeah, we'll keep you updated.
Great.
The market's been crazy, so it's just the luck of the day really is, I think. You know, we see rates go up 20 basis points one day, then down 30 the next, and it's, it's just been crazy. So there's no predicting, but we just felt that, you know, it's worth, if it was like a 10, maybe a 10 or 15 basis points difference between what the indicative bid was and the firm bid, we would have just went with the bids today. But with the 60, over 60 basis point range, we just think that we could get better, do better for you guys.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
So the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $6 million general obligation limited tax school bonds, Series 2022, for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number six, approval of authorization to pay additional June and July bills for fiscal year 2022. The Chair will entertain a motion to authorize the direct, authorize and direct the treasurer to pay any additional bills received in June, July 2022 that have been budgeted for in the current fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number seven, approval of resolution to permanently transfer funds from the O and M Fund to Capital Projects Fund. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution, permanently transferring $2 million for the operations and maintenance fund to the Capital Projects Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number eight, adoption of 2022, 2023 routine business office resolutions. The Chair, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the adoption of the routine 2022, 2023 business office resolutions as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Motion carries. And number nine, approval of lunch fees for 2022, 2023 school year. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the lunch fees for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Motion carries. And next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
So a couple items in my report. One is our school families, registration for the 22, 23 school year will be done electronically. Will not have in-person registration, it's the same process that we used last year. The families will be able to complete the registration process through Skyward. Registration will begin on July 29th and continue through August 5th. And if families are new to our district, they can reach out to their child's school directly to set up registration. And more information will be shared with school families later this summer. But again, that'll open up on July 29th and continue through August 5th. And then there's a little bit of type, a little typo there. It's actually July 20, it's July 19th school meeting, not the 17th. But the Village has a conflict with this meeting space and so we're going to need to move our July 19th board meeting. Typically, we'd do south, but we're going to take advantage of this opportunity and we're going to have it at the high school in the media center. And that's because, you know, lately, there's been a lot of issues with the pool at the high school. So we thought it'd be a good time to, me at the high school, one of the things that we'll do as part of the agenda is take a tour of the pool so that the board can see the pool. Joe Smith, our Director of Building Grounds, will join, join us and kind of take you through some of the issues and concerns. Because, you know, that's a decision that we keep kind of pushing down the road, but eventually, we're going to have to come around to whether or not we're going to start to really truly invest in the pool facility or if we're going to decide not to have a pool, which also is a different type of investment to close it. But we thought since we have to change the location of our meeting, we'll have it at the high school and we'll tour the pool that night.
And can I just request that we have like a general tour of the high school from like a facilities perspective, just so?
Since we're there, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we're there, like, we're all going to be there, why not? I know I'm not super familiar with the high school.
Offices are on the other side of the building because they've only gone through the student services entrance.
Yeah. So just a general, like, and from a facilities standpoint, you know, so Joe can talk through the pieces of the roof and we can all kind of, you know?
Sure.
Understand the kidney in a different way.
Sure. Do that. And like, Kim, did you have anything?
I'll do it in public.
Okay. All right.
Anything else? Any board reports?
Yes. We had a PR meeting. I don't know how PR meetings are going to look going forward, but we did mention how that should still be a public group with Jamie coming on board. But yes, the main focus of this was just wrapping up the year because as everyone should know, July 1st starts the new school year. Runs June, July 1st through June 30th. First and foremost, thank you to Shannon, Kevin and Roxanne for all her input on that newsletter. There was a lot of stumbles to get that newsletter out, but the majority of the school district got the, the majority of the community in the school district got the newsletter. So great step. Of course, there was some stumbles. Second part of the meeting, our 50th anniversary is coming. In July of 1972, we became a CUSD, which means is a community unit district, which means we run AK, technically a pre-K, through 12, 12th grade district. All decisions are made with all of those class levels in order, which is why in the past, we can't do one thing at the high school and then one thing at the elementary levels. So yes, it is our 50th anniversary and we've got plans for the year. So lots of things going on all year, reminding us it has been 50 years. So that's it.
Thanks, Ian. Thanks, Ange. Moving on to, oh, any other board reports? Okay, moving on to public comment, we've got...
I do have one.
Great.
All right. I will try and make it through this. All right. So it is hard to believe that Retirement Day is near. And this is my last board meeting. I am officially retiring the many hats I've borne over the course of my tenure at CUSD 201, especially that of Temporary Superintendent Secretary, Temporary Director of Buildings and Grounds, HR, and Crossing Guard. As a district, we have accomplished so much over the past 12 years that has had a positive impact on our students, families, and staff. I've had a great team of board members and administrators surrounding me. And I want to especially acknowledge the people that supported me in the early years at CUSD 201, Judy McMahon, Judy Duhai, and Laura von Furco. Laura was my payroll savior on many occasions, more than I care to admit. Carl Thorne and Scott Russo were tremendous support during the transition in the Director of Buildings and Grounds position. And special thanks to Anisha Gorilic, Chris Vent, Lori Pilster, and Shannon Cosart. These women have gone above and beyond and I am forever grateful. And Kevin, thank you for giving me the autonomy to do my job and the trust that you have placed in me and board members, the trust that you have placed in me. We have made it through the tough early years, many late, late board nights, very contentious board meetings, packed board meetings, and through a few meetings this year that were deja vu of those early years. I could not have done this job without the support of my children, Garrett and Kirsten, understanding that mom had to miss something because she had a board meeting or negotiations, et cetera, a birthday, sporting events, things like that. I've had to miss anniversaries because of board meetings. I especially could not have done this job without the support of my husband Greg. He has listened to me patiently and unconditionally when I needed to unwind after a particularly stressful day. He has understood and even accepted the long hours. He is, sorry. He has always provided me with the encouragement I needed and told me to make the tough decisions, even if they were not popular. 2020 has definitely been a year of change for me and the district, and it will continue to be that going forward. There's still much work to be done to keep CUSD 201 on the path of a great school district. I wish the District, Board of Education, staff, and families of CUSD 201 much future success. And I am looking forward to my time, getting to spend more time with my two granddaughters, Riley and Taylor. And it is time for me to assume the official role of daily 10:00 AM ski boat driver and skier at 10:10. And then the lake is calling and I must go. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Yay, that was so nice, Kim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just quickly say, I'm so glad you acknowledged that you were Crossing Guard because I've been thinking about this whole night, that like, and I, I think it speaks to you as a leader and is representative of your tenure at the district that when there was a gap, you stepped in and filled it. And that's very, it's very, very evident in what you've done for the district. So thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Any other public comments? All right, future meeting and events, the only thing that we have on there is the next board meeting on July 19th at Westmont High School in the Media Center. And that is it. We don't need to go back into closed session. So the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the June 21st, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education.